It's five o'clock and we have a quorum present. I want to welcome everybody for coming to this special meeting of the Board of Elections. I know it's an important topic to everybody here. And we have a number of people that want to address the Board. There's a lot of people, so if you could keep your remarks below three minutes. I mean, in three minutes, we're not going to drop the floor out from under you. But if you could just keep it, you know, around three minutes, we would appreciate it. We certainly want to hear what you have to say. Lisa Moreno is going to call the role of people that want to speak. If you didn't say you want to speak, but you do want to speak, after we have the people who want to speak speak, we will ask if anybody wants to speak. Okay? So Lisa.
So first, we have Elbridge James. Elbridge James.
Elbridge.
Okay. Pat Benetti.
Pat, please come up.
Wait a second.
Please sit there, because there's a microphone. And just tell us your name, and I'll thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you for continuing to listen to the issues that we have at the voting. I live in Damascus, and I've talked here before last year, trying to, or the last time, trying to get Damascus as a voting site, and it did become a voting site. We did not have a lot of people turn out in Damascus last year. And as I mentioned to you a couple of times this year, there was no advertising. We had no newspaper. We had, I mean, the advertising was very small signs on a fast highway. So people just didn't know about it, because I was actually campaigning at that time. And people would say, "Oh, I didn't know we had early voting," so, in Damascus. So the closest thing to Damascus, other than that, is fifteen to twenty miles away from Damascus. Clarksville, which is going crazy, has forty thousand homes, is within a few miles of Damascus. And Damascus is growing, too. We have apartment building, six hundred apartments going in within a mile, maybe a mile and a half of the voting site. In addition, we have a lot of townhomes going in even closer. So I am concerned. I really want to make sure that we make Damascus work, because we have not had, we did not have the numbers last year, and I did mention why I thought that was. And so that's basically all I have to say. Benetti, do you have any questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
How long does it take to get from Clarksville to the other early voting sites?
Well...
To Germantown or...
Germantown would be the closest.
Okay.
And it'll probably take fifteen, fifteen minutes or more, according to lights and stuff.
Okay.
It takes about three minutes to get into Damascus, three or four minutes.
Okay.
From Route 27, Route 27, yes.
Mrs. Benetti, do you, so do you think, from what you saw on the campaign trail, that one of the reasons for the lower turnout of Damascus was that people didn't know about it?
Ah, yes. I really did. I really do think that. I think we need to put some signs up in the library earlier, maybe at Safeway and other places, so we can, people can know about. Like I said, we had no newspaper last year in Damascus. The Gazette had dropped off in Damascus in the spring, so we had no, no kind of newspaper or anything. That's, so that made a difference, too. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Josephine Wang.
Welcome.
I'm Josephine Wang, and I live in the city of Gaithersburg, city proper. And the reason I'm here is to, in support of the early voting site in Potomac, because there are a lot of Chinese people who don't know the language. And I see the early voting, you had different multiple languages. I think it's best used where there's a concentration of Chinese voters. So while I was voting over at the Borah Park, and one, one thing that bothered me a great deal is that they had multiple languages. I was a poll watcher. Here, I was looking at it. I was totally treated really, really rudely, saying, "I'm not supposed to touch it." They were just totally not very friendly. I mean, here I am, trying to, maybe the poll watcher, I was just trying to be thinking, well, these printed literature should be well-used. I didn't see one single person actually picked it up, you know, bilingual or trilingual, whatever, this multilingual. I thought, maybe if it was, you know, okay, I'm not going to help, I'm not supposed to, but if you place it so that people are used, are easily accessible to use these multilingual explanations, that would be good. That was not a good thing. I only saw it over at Borah Park. I was treated very rudely, and I don't, I think there's something that could be improved in terms of training your judges or whoever at the early voting sites. I only saw one, okay? Maybe it's not true in the other places. And I just want to come here and tell you that it, this is my view. And especially if you're, if you're Chinese, you're really not, you know, your view is, oh, okay, you know, you're, here, here's this multilingual, you can read this. But I was prevented from using, not me, I could speak English, but other people, okay? So that's the whole idea of printed those literature. If you're not going to use it, why, why, why put it there? That's my question. Okay? Thank you.
Next, we have Darryl Anderson.
Welcome, Darryl. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shaw and the Board. Yes, my name's Darryl Anderson. I'm the Chair of the Montgomery County Democratic Central Committee, but I'm also an individual who has a large interest in making sure that we have early voting sites that are accessible to more people, as many people as possible. I've been involved with this from the very beginning, from, in the two thousand six, two thousand seven, when early voting first started. I, I was involved in how, how do we do this? And I remember one of the, the hardest things we could do was to try to get, we only had five sites, was to try to put the early voting sites in places that we could actually meet the requirements of the state. Fifty, and Montgomery County was such a large county, it was difficult to hit that fifty percent, I believe it was, at the beginning. Once we expanded to nine, which means we have to hit eighty percent, that becomes, means that we could expand to more of the highly density, high-density places in the county and really bring in more people. All the data show that when an early voting site first is put into a neighborhood, it doesn't really increase turnout, it, it isn't used that well. By the third elections cycle, where people become comfortable with certain early voting sites in the county, you actually get a two to four percent turnout increase for that election. And that's data that's been studied since the nineteen nineties. And I think that's, one of the things people talk about is that increased turnout, it just makes it more convenient for people to vote, and that's not really true. But it, but you do have to have them in the same place, election after election, in high-density areas where people then become comfortable coming to those sites. I'm here really to advocate for remove, for restoring both the Lawton Center and the Praesner Center, and I, I don't see any reason why those two sites should not be available, because they've been there before, they're comfortable, they're, they're getting lots of voters. The Potomac site and the Brookville site, I don't feel meet Comar regulations as required by the state. I've put in a complaint for that, which I'm sure I will not hear from for a while, just because it takes a long time. But what I'm here really for is to urge you to please restore those two sites, Praesner and Lawton. Thank you.
Next, we have Dan McHugh.
Welcome, Dan.
Hello. I'm the Vice President to the Montgomery County Young Republicans, and I'm a Gaithersburg resident. I am here because I am very disturbed. I mean, at the end of the day, there are nine early voting locations. Seven of them were retained by this Board from the previous Board Democratic majority. Seven out of nine is seventy-seven percent, okay? The Democrats are getting seventy-seven percent of what they wanted, and they are acting like little children, because they're not getting a hundred percent of what they usually get, because they run this county lock, stock, and barrel, one-party rule, forty-two elected positions, and they're all held by Democrats. Finally, Republicans get a three to two majority on the Election Board of Elections, because Larry Hogan won, even though he was outspent by thirteen million dollars by Anthony Brown. And, you know, they could have voted three to two to move all nine of these locations, but they did not. They retained seven out of the nine, okay? This is ridiculous, in my opinion, and absurd. And the fact is, I, I think that, you know, from what I've read, it definitely seems like they're going to get the Burtonsville location back, but I hope the Potomac one is retained. It is, I am sick and tired, I'm a Republican in Montgomery County, I'm used to eating humble pie and losing, okay? And for once, the Democrats should have to eat a little bit of humble pie in this county. Where was the moral outrage when they gerrymandered Connie Morella, when a war on a woman was, you know, when Governor Glenn Denning, a man, declared a war on a woman and gerrymandered her district in Montgomery County to get rid of her? Where was the moral outrage when they gerrymandered Roscoe Bartlett? Oh, and you want to talk about minorities being oppressed? Well, how about Donna Edwards in Prince George's County? She sued the state of Maryland after they gerrymandered her district. And what did, what did the Democrats down in Indianapolis do about for her? Nothing! So that's what I have to say. I hope Potomac is retained. I understand the dilemma, but, you know, to call this Board oppressing minorities is out, is absurd. Thank you.
Mr. McHugh, where do you live?
Gaithersburg.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Next, we have David Smith.
My name is David Smith. I live in Rockville, mailing address, but it's actually on Incorporated Montgomery County. I'm actually an elections judge, as David knows, and so I, I believe that it's very important that people get to vote. And we should do everything we can, you as Board or Elections should do everything that you can to ensure that there's maximum access to franchise. When the previous Speaker seemed to make a claim that this is all a political spoil system, and that one should determine the outcome of where an early voting site should be based on which party selected the sites, that seems to be totally wrong. The question is, what criteria should be used for those sites to enable those people who need to get to early voting sites, who have a hard time getting to regular voting sites, to enable them to have the most impact, to enable them to be able to, to get and vote? And it seems to me that the Praesner Center and, and the Lawton Site are perfect and have, have fulfilled that responsibility and that capacity in the past. And if you need a site in Potomac or you need a site in Alny, why put sites in places where public transportation are very minimal and people who would have a hard time getting to those sites would be unable to get to a site where they previously could get to the site? It seems to me if you could expand the sites, add two more if you feel is a need in Potomac, I don't really know that the Potomac community has a hard time getting to the voting places. Potomac tends to be relatively affluent. And it certainly should not be done on a partisan basis. I think the reason people are hearing that this is a partisan thing, it's a voter suppression thing, is quite unfortunate. It, it, it really demeans our system. I certainly hope that this Board, even with a Republican minority, would not fall into the trap of saying, "We've got to get even, because Democrats suppressed us." I'm, the question is, are the sites fair? Do they serve a purpose? Thank you.
Mr. Smith, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Do you have any evidence of how many people in any of these areas had difficulty getting to a voting site because they lacked a car or needed public transportation?
I do not. But then again, the sites were there. You're saying if you remove a site, then, you know, if the sites were removed, then you'd find out whether the people had difficulty getting there or not.
Because we know the turnout was record levels in two thousand eight.
Yes.
In both...
And even in my precinct.
And in your precinct, I'm sure, as well. But we don't really know, even if you take Burtonsville as an example, how many people needed public transportation to get to early voting. Isn't that right?
That's true. I don't know, but that doesn't mean other people don't. I mean, I'm not a demographer, and I certainly haven't analyzed the statistics. But my sense is, knowing the communities, knowing that Chevy Chase Site, Lawton, is accessible to public transportation and is in a relatively dense population area, and that the Praesner Center, which at one time we were trained as election judges over there, it isn't a community which is quite distant from Alny, because it was a long trek for me to get from Rockville to get over there. The people in those areas would have a hard time getting to early voting site in Alny, if that's supposed to be the replacement. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
I'd like to give back to Elbridge James. Elbridge James. Okay, then we have Vivian Malloy.
Good evening. My name is Vivian Malloy. I'm a resident of Alny, which I consider mid-county, and is in Legislative District fourteen. I've served on the Montgomery County Democratic Central Committee and was first elected in two thousand six, and did two terms. I was very involved with the initial support of the selection of the early voting sites. And since I was very accountable as the chairperson of the precinct organization, I took to heart my commitment of the Maryland Praesner Center, since that was my backyard. I am very involved, I was very involved, in the staffing of this particular early voting site. With the residents of East County, they supported us tremendous. This area is rich in a diverse culture, hard-working people, who wanted to exercise their voting rights and supported the Maryland Praesner Center. They delivered each election cycle, and the last one, over five thousand votes, came from this site. It is very important for us to have visibility within a community that was, over ninety percent within that five-mound district, people lived. It's a very dense population. It met all of the criteria of the Comar Bill in making the selection of these early voting sites. Neither your choice of Democrats or Republic or Independent was considered in our views of making the selection. We looked at the people. We want the population there to be supportive of being able to go and support each and every one of these early voting sites. We looked at parking, was it accessible? We looked at transportation issue, can the people get there who did not have their own public transportation? We looked at disability and handicap access, especially for our seniors. So we took in consideration all aspects. Now, Burtonsville has all of those criterias. And, as I say, it's an area that has hard-working people, but at the same time, they are very involved in exercising their civil rights of voting. And we don't want to take away that opportunity for them to demonstrate that they are a strong community, and they are visible, and they want to be heard, and they will let everyone know that they are engaged in this election process. So I'm asking for you to restore the Maryland Praesner Center, and it would be a very good thing for that community.
Mrs. Malloy, I had a question for you. You talked about your involvement, did you say that you were involved in helping to select sites?
As, on the Central Committee, we submitted recommendations.
Did the Central Committee itself have its own slate of recommended sites that it had proposed to the Board of Elections in the last cycle?
I wasn't on that, during that timeframe, but I'm sure they gave certain selections and recommendation, because that is a process. They're not, it's bipartisan, they look at total criteria and the best areas where we can get the voters to come out.
But in your situation, you were sort of part of the committee that was recommending sites to the full Central Committee? Is that how?
No, it was our recommendation to the Election Board.
On behalf of the Democratic Central Committee?
Yes.
And which cycle was this for?
The first cycle and the second cycle I was involved in.
Okay.
Yes.
Vivian, when you made those recommendations, were they made in a public session?
Yes. It was sent, it was a written report that was submitted, and the other members who came from the Central Committee came to a meeting, I think we had a two o'clock afternoon meeting.
Yeah, that's about right.
And then it was presented at the two o'clock meeting. But it's representing, we had someone from our committee who represented the entire committee, not the, we all couldn't make it to that particular meeting.
Do you know that you were majority that time?
Oh, yes.
Accept those places? Because I was there, and I wanted to know for some of those centers, because I didn't have a post that time. Do you know that your recommendation would be...
From the Central Committee.
Majority of Board of Elections, because they were the majority, the Democrats were the majority. Do you think that may happen?
Okay. I'm not sure if I understand it. I can just say, what we said at that time, from the Central Committee, was within a majority, yes. Going to the meeting, what you made a decision at the meeting, I wasn't present, so I can't tell you what transpired during that timeframe.
Just, do you remember one of those sites that you guys recommended was Damascus?
Damascus? Did I?
I don't think it was.
No. Not to my recollection.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Elbridge James.
Hey, y'all. Good afternoon. How you doing? How are you? Doing fine. Aw, thanks for being late. It was so easy to find this place. Sort of like where you proposed the election sites are. Oh. I'll come straight to the point. Thank you for having me. I apologize for being late. I am Elbridge James. I'm here representing the Montgomery County and the State of Maryland NAACP. Our President Anita Powell from the Montgomery County NAACP, Joel Stansbury from the State of Maryland NAACP. The NAACP, along with other consortium of groups, are opposed to any move that this organization is planning with regard to moving the two current sites to two offsites. In another life, I was a sports official, so I had to go to those sites, and I had to go to those sites on a regular basis. They are two of the most out-of-the-way sites that you wouldn't even plan to have a site. We're looking at the two current sites, they serve both the community and the different diversity of ethnic and social groups that are in those communities, especially the Bethesda community, which has the elderly and the new professionals who really don't drive. You're moving into the Potomac Community Center, which is clearly out of the way. And being a basketball official, I readily attended Bullis High School and the Community Center, or working with youth and young adults. Those sites, you, you, there's no public transportation, you have to have a, regarding that, a vehicle, there's no food areas around, and they're very inconvenient. The two sites you're moving them from have high traffic, have high visibility. One of the sites, Bethesda Site, was a prior facility for the Montgomery County NAACP. It gets good community use, has good connectivity to public transportation, and the dynamics of that area are both Republican and Democrat. So move that site to a site that's only convenient for those who drive, has limited use, is really a waste of the resources of the county. The Praesner Site, again, has access to public transportation. The alternate site you're looking for has limited bus transportation and is very seldom used by those who cannot find it or not there for any kind of group activity. And so I really want to question why, in fact, removing it. I think there are other individuals that will speak to the details of what I want to say, but my question is, because A, the limiting of the resources that the county has, B, I do not see the State Board of Elections giving us more than eight sites. You know, the State Board of Elections is giving us only eight sites, not to, to use those in a more appropriate manner, I have to question that, especially with the resources we're talking about, even if the county wants to put additional resources in the election sites. If the State of Maryland will not allow you to move beyond eight sites, why are we taking them away from the areas that give you the best advantage to use them? And as I said, in the Bethesda area, you have, if the demographics hold up or the election cycle holds up, there are also Republican Democrats that use that site regularly. So, again, I question that. The other question that I have is regarding, again, to the Praesner Site. We're trying to encourage good participation. We're trying to encourage everyone to take the opportunity to have representative government. The Praesner Site gives that opportunity, especially for new voters. We encourage for families to come out with their children and see the electoral process as it works. And now you're taking them to a site where no one's, if they can't get to it, how in the world are they going to try to get to it with their children? Especially people that are taking public transportation. We have a clear question with regard to that issue. Anita Powell, our President, has submitted information to this organization. If you do not have it, I have some copies here, but I think it has already been sent to you with regard to why, in fact, we need to keep that site current. Others have brought up from our organization with regard to the legal process, which, in fact, the decisions were made. I think there were certain violations to, in fact, the protocols that are needed to make this kind of decision. I'll let you address that with others, though we have been told by our national organization if this goes any further, we are to contact the NAACP Legal Defense Fund, and in fact, and have them investigate this, because, and we're looking at Section Two of the Civil Rights Code in terms of, this was a violation of Section Two, in terms of disenfranchising minority communities and new voter communities from participating. So overall, and my time may be short, we clearly believe this is a violation in whether it was intent to disenfranchise or just has the effect of disenfranchising. It, in fact, limits the opportunity to vote in the State of Maryland and in Montgomery County. And we, we ask you to reverse your decision.
Mr. James, I had a question. Where do you live, sir?
I live in Rockville.
Would you agree with...
But I represent the whole Montgomery County.
I understand.
And I'm here for the State of Maryland.
Would you agree with me, sir, that whether something is clearly out of the way kind of depends on where you live?
No. Out of the way is clearly whether I can get to it or not.
But doesn't it depend on where you live?
And I'm basing that on my position on whether I can get to it or not. Okay? Baltimore Washington Airport's out of the way, but I can get to it.
Right. But it's out of the way for you, but it may not be out of the way for someone else, right?
Looking at the constituent populations to which those centers served, they are the ones that are saying it is out of the way for them. I'm not saying it's out of the way for me. I'm looking at populations in, of less means. And I'm not talking about just the poor, I'm talking about the elderly, and I'm talking about the new millennials who don't have vehicles. And so they've moved into Bethesda, for instance, because that is a good location for them to go back and forth to work, to raise their kids, and to have the services that Montgomery County has traditionally provided. I'm looking at the Praesner Center, which has the public transportation and has the apartments and communities around there, which encourages voting and encourages people to come out and vote. Appreciate it. Thank you.
There was no one else that has identified to address the Board?
There's nobody else that signed in, but if someone were to speak?
Yes.
Okay. Just tell us your name.
My name is Karen Murphy, and I live in Kensington with my husband and two children. Couple of people have, have mentioned public transportation, and I think that that's a really important point to consider in this, in this vote. Somebody mentioned, you know, well, it's not out of the way for you, but what about somebody who doesn't have access to a car or is, you know, a retiree who doesn't drive anymore? If there's no bus service, or there's only one in in the morning and one out in the evening, then that's inaccessible, you know, even for them, even for the people in that community. Another one of you mentioned the travel distance or the time... Another one of you mentioned the travel distance or the time it takes, but I didn't hear any distinction between using your personal car or having to use a bus that only travels in and out once a day. So I think these are really important, you know, issues to consider, you know. I mean, not everybody has access to a car, so if somebody is relying on public transportation, even if it's only a handful of people, I really think they deserve your consideration in this vote. That's it. Thank you.
Ms. Murphy, I have one question.
Oh, sorry.
You mentioned about the problem of a bus traveling in and out only once a day. Were you referring to a particular place?
Well, as I understand it, the facility that's being considered in Potomac only has bus service twice a day. And if you want to go an early vote there and you don't have a personal car, or, you know, you're too elderly to drive and you can't drive anymore, then it's an all-day trip, basically, because you just don't have the public transportation to get you there and back and, you know, make it, you know, accessible, you know, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sylvia Darrow, and I do live on Falls Road in Potomac, and I've lived in the house in Montrose Road and Falls Road section of Montgomery Square since First of all, to make some clarifications, the T-2 comes out of Rockville at 6:30 in the morning and takes people to Friendship Heights, and then, of course, they can get Metro and come on into the city. My tenant, who's lived with me several years, takes the T-2 most of the mornings to get to her job in Georgetown, right off of Georgetown. The T-2 not only comes at 6:30 in the morning, but it runs every hour, almost every hour, until 10:00 at night, and I have actually seen the T-2 and the ride-ons come into Potomac Community Center, make a circle, and drop people off. I've actually seen that. There are two other communities that I think we should certainly take advantage, not advantage, but not take away their advantage of accessibility to the Potomac Community Center. That's Toby Town and Scotland, two very respected, very old black communities that go back to probably the Civil War. If you look at just District 15, which comes from Montgomery Square, I mean, from Montgomery Mall to Hyattstown, including Monocacy and Poolsville, we have one, that is Kingsview Middle School Community Center in Germantown. For me, I do have to take a car. In all of the area, we do need to take cars because there's no, other than bus, for us to go into Rockville, which has no parking. I use the closest one to me right now, and I can take a bus to get there if I needed to, is in Gaithersburg, and I believe that's the Bauer Community Center, which is new. Not Bauer Drive, but the Community Center off of Gaithersburg, which is new.
Next to Gaithersburg?
Yeah, and that's the closest one and convenient for one for me, which would be about six miles.
How long does it take you to get to the Executive Office Building? You said you live in Montrose Road and Falls Road?
There's no parking. It's all, you have to pay for the parking.
Okay, but if you paid for the parking, how long would it take you to get to-
About 15 minutes because of the traffic going into the city.
Google would say tab, but okay.
Well, that's Google on a nice day. And getting here, it took me a good long while because I came off at 2:70. So therefore, I would suggest if you cannot make all of the same suggestions that you have, that perhaps to keep Maryland Preisner open, but to keep Potomac. Not only that, Potomac has a lot of new building and density going up on River Road, on Seven Locks, and other community areas. And by the way, I'm elderly and I'm not rich. Thank you.
Let her speak, show some respect. Does anybody else? Lori? Yeah, just, and then, I'm sorry, this lady raised her hand first.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, you-
All right, I just wanted to say something. My name is Holly Joseph. I live in Bethesda, but it's not about that I'll lose my early voting site. It was just, there are things in the whole discussion, I go to the-
Excuse me, could you speak up? I mean, you're facing that way and here.
Holly, I want you to talk louder.
Okay, I'd love to talk louder. This is, okay. This is about me because I wanted to say something that I hadn't heard, which was, did anyone here discuss Rendell versus Sims? Did you ever hear that? Rendell?
Certainly heard of it, but we never haven't discussed it.
Okay, 1964, that decisions on voting were one man, one vote. They should have said one person, one vote, but that was 1964. But the point was you go after the voters, you go where the voters are. So it's not who's in party, it's just we all agree. And I just, I've got to divulge that my first registration was as a Republican, and I'm just desperate for someone to say that it's not Republican, Democrat, it's this bedrock principle of going for the voters. The second thing is, principle is that you don't change something without compelling reason. And I've been trying to get my own voting site changed, but apparently it's not compelling. I'm now voting outside my district because not compelling enough to change it. So, two things, and thank you very much.
Holly, listen.
Oh, go ahead.
You first.
Please.
Holly, based upon what you said, do you see any merit in an Election Board putting sites where there's never been one before in terms of reaching out for communities that never had early-
I'd say there'd be a really good reason if there were people there. But if you're taking the site from where there are people to where there are few people, that would not be a compelling reason.
How, Ms. Joseph, how many fewer people would you say that you would draw the line in?
I, I, well, we can go back to the, the, KOMAR regs were, gave a guideline for 80% should be, let me think. I haven't really done that. I would just say you don't want to go the direction from coverage of 93 to 82% covered in a five-mile radius is not the direction you want to go.
Well, Ms. Joseph, I want to make sure you're not misinformed here. I mean, the coverage of the nine that this Board proposed three weeks ago was 92.6%.
Excuse me, I have a question about that.
Because of order, Mr. Name, and I have to- I think the coverage for the sites that were picked in the 2014 election cycle was maybe a half a point higher. They were roughly, roughly equivalent.
I have a question of the Chair and then of the Election Director.
Sure.
That's the first time that I've heard that statistic, and I'm just wondering whether that calculation has been done, and if so, how it is that Mr. Vincent knows that and I don't. Have you heard this before? Have you heard this before?
I'll make it, they do their homework.
Okay, so, my question is, has that calculation been done? Who did that calculation? And why haven't we been informed on our side of the Board?
Well, I think we should discuss that at an appropriate point in the meeting.
This is an appropriate point in the meeting? You just brought it up.
Okay, fine, well, you can ask, but, you know.
How did you know that it was 92. whatever?
I figured it out.
Oh, good for you.
Well, I've got to say, I couldn't because I live in Bethesda. Chevy Chase will lose that as a, that's got to go down a percentage. So you've got to be covering more people to keep that up, I would think. That's my off-the-top calculation. Go ahead.
You mentioned that you wanted to change the polling place in your neighborhood because you wanted to vote in your precinct instead of in another precinct. Can you tell us which precinct that is? Or which neighborhood that is, if you don't know the precinct number?
Uh, yeah, it's, we used to vote at the Lutheran Church, which is, I think, going to be torn down, and one time we voted at Bethel, and I think, I don't think that they were receptive. But the point, the point was, is that the desire to keep the polling place where it was, even though it wasn't as accommodating to people, the many elderly, I saw people crying because they were-
Well, I would just say that if you have a location within your precinct that you are interested in relocating to, I know I personally, and I'm guessing the rest of the Board would be interested in hearing about it and considering that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I still have a question, and I guess it's directed at you. Have you been informed by either state or local staff about the coverage for the plan that was adopted by the Board last month?
Alex told me that he figured it out. He worked on all the documents and he-
Okay. So, Margaret, have we gotten any, has our staff done a calculation or has the state staff done a calculation that they have shared with us?
No, the state has not. We have none.
And I believe this officially comes from the state, doesn't it?
Yes, all of the numbers that you received come from the State Board, and they are the numbers that were reflected on the 2013 poll product.
So, so in other words, there has not been an official determination as to what the numbers are at this point. There's been one Board Member's estimate.
To my knowledge, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else would like to speak? Lori? Welcome, just tell us your name.
Hi, my name is Lori Harberson. I live in Potomac, and I want to say I live about 15 minutes away from the nearest early voting center from last year, the Rockville one. Also, I, I ran for Board of Ed last year, and I stood at all of the early voting centers, and I stood at, I was all over the place, so I felt very familiar with all the voting centers. And I noticed that the Rockville one, that's the closest one for me and a lot of people that live in Potomac, I observed while standing at the Rockville location passing out my pamphlets that a number of disabled people were coming, there was a drive-through, which I hear isn't there anymore, but they were trying to drive and park there so they could immediately get into the building. They were told they could not park there, there was handicap parking down the road, and it was like a half a block away. And I saw some very disgruntled people leaving, and I don't know if they vote, they didn't park because they just, they couldn't get the passenger into the building. So I feel like there's an issue with the disabled who live in the Potomac area. Yeah, you could, anyone can vote by mailing, right? You can mail it in, but a lot of the argument I'm hearing is, you know, that, for Metro and all that stuff. But I feel like it's, it's just that there's a long distance, and I think that the Potomac site, the Potomac Community Center site, is a valid place to change it to. I mean, I, I don't want to oppose any of the other sites, but I just feel that Potomac Community Center is a, is a good site, and I feel it's worth, worth trying because I feel like you'll reach more disabled people that way. And also, I don't know what that many people who vote early in my, who live near me because it's too far away. It's, you know, 15 minutes to drive, people are busy, parents are busy, they're not going to drive that far to vote early. So, thank you.
Okay, does anybody else want to come forward and speak? Okay, well, first I want to thank everybody for coming. I know this is a very high-interest topic, and we've heard, the Board has heard from hundreds of people, public hearing, emails, so we really have heard a lot from the community, and I personally understand how contentious it is for some people. I just want to say that there was never any intention to have voter suppression. That's the last thing on any one of the seven of us mind, you know. I've been here for four months, and these are seven wonderful people, and nobody would ever suggest any one of us would be for voter suppression. But I understand the concerns of the community, and I want to hopefully go to the State Board tomorrow with a compromise. Right now, the Board has, has agreed to seven of the previous nine sites from the previous Board. I'm going to make a motion now, and then you can make a motion together. I'll make my first motion. I want to move to amend the previous motion that was submitted to the Board when we had our vote. Motion to amend the motion on recommending the initial nine early voting sites. And that amendment is that I would suggest that we reinstate the early voting site in Burtonsville at the Marilyn Preisner Center. Reinstate Burtonsville and substitute that for the Longwood Community Center, which we had initially placed to serve the only and Potomac communities. So that's my motion, to reinstate Burtonsville and replace Longwood in the only Brookville community. Now, do I have a second?
I second that motion.
Okay, any discussion? Yes. Any discussion?
Yes. It's a long day.
I hear it.
I, I'm delighted to hear that half of the issue has run true and that, that there is a motion to take care of half of the issue that is before us. However, it really doesn't deal with the entirety of what has brought us here and what has been the result of the action of the last Board meeting. And I would like to amend your motion to add the Lawton Community Center to the list and delete the Potomac Community Center.
I second that.
In doing this, we, we are taking care of both these issues from which we have heard much, much testimony. We have had not only, and I certainly thank everybody that came forward here this evening, I know it's a difficult time to get out here with rush hour traffic and everything, but, you know, people that, that we've been hearing from, multiple, you know, dozens and dozens of emails and phone calls that have been coming in. And if I may just say to the gentleman that thinks that this is a partisan effort, I think all of my colleagues here on the Board know that all of us attempt to leave our politics at the door to the Election Board, and certainly I have handled myself that way for the past four years. It's, in the past, when we've arrived at, at the early voting sites, it's been a very collegial kind of discussion. We have reached across the aisle, so to speak. We have talked together as a group, we have shared ideas about the various sites, and we arrived at compromises and the locations. I can assure you that my support of the Damascus site two years ago was not wildly accepted by the Democratic Party.
Some of those opponents are here.
And, you know, but it was, it was something in discussions and hearing from people, we heard from a lot of people in Damascus at that time. And we had the ability two years ago to create four new sites, to add four new sites. And of those, of those four sites, two that were strongly supported by the then minority Republican Party were Damascus and Bethesda. And guess what? Two of the four sites became Damascus and Bethesda. Now, you know, we had three votes to, you know, take, take four sites, totally different, but, but that isn't how it happened. I initially, when, when I put forward at our, at our last Board meeting the discussion for this, my original motion had been to keep the same nine sites in place that we currently have. For five of those sites, the four new ones plus one that was changed in the Rockville area, it, they've only had one election cycle, the 2014 election, which, as we know, was a very- was a very low-turnout election, low-turnout election. To me, it makes perfect sense to keep those sites, go through the presidential election, which four years ago we saw tremendous outpouring, tremendous lines, so much so that that's how we got additional sites. And we could see where were these pop sites that, you know, needed additional sites close to them or in a proximity where people were pouring out of other communities to get to the five sites we had at that time. It gives you more data. It's better to, you know, to have the two election cycles behind you. But in speaking directly to my motion in terms of Bethesda, we've just heard such compelling testimony about Bethesda that it's not just an area that has a lot of people living in it, but it's an area with a lot of commerce. People are coming into Bethesda every single day of the week to work. They work in offices, they work in restaurants, they work in shops, you know, I mean, it...we don't have a timeline, ma'am.
I realize that, but actually amendments are to be voted on before you can...I mean, you have to have...
I'm talking to the amendment, Bethesda.
True.
And, you know, it just is an area, there is no good reason at this time to remove it as a voting site. It accommodates a lot of people, and I just feel very, very strongly that we've got to keep it as well as coming back to Crazner.
How do we know if we go to Potomac, we won't have a large number of voters? How do we know, because we never had them there?
I can speak to that.
Please.
Okay, well, first let me say that I very much appreciated, Jim, your comments about the desire not to suppress votes. You made similar comments. I had the honor of a joint appearance with you on Monday where you made similar comments about the desire being to increase voter turnout, and I'm glad that we share that as a goal. I actually got publicly criticized yesterday for not questioning your motives. And I made clear that, I mean, I have to say, I don't understand your reasoning, and I'm looking to understand your reasoning, but I literally got criticized for looking to understand your reasoning instead of assuming that it was a certain result. I actually came with some data to help talk about what it is that...why it is that we don't believe that while your motives are good, I think that your math leads a little bit to be desired. And so the first thing I have that I'd like to distribute to everybody is, this is a map from the Maryland Department of Transportation. It's a traffic volume map, and it has the entire county...first it has, you know, it kind of gets smaller and smaller, and then it gets into urban detail, and it gives you estimates of the number of car trips on particular roads and locations. And if you look at Falls Road, it's actually...I know it's hard, I've spent more time studying this map than you all have time for right now, but the...there's an arrow at Falls Road. If you look at the...it's on the flip side. If you look at the, you know... I'm sorry.
Yeah, like this too.
Oh, it's not two-sided?
Okay. Is there a second?
I apologize. Okay, so basically, just one map that's the entire county, and on the other side of it, it has a more detailed view in the bottom part of the county, the southern part of the county. And what you will see, and unfortunately, it doesn't appear that we have the part that even...that shows Bethesda even in greater detail, although I can show it to you on my computer. But what it shows is, is that the traffic on Falls Road is roughly nineteen thousand vehicles on average per day. Now, quite frankly, I don't know if that means coming and going, so that might be half of that, but it's roughly nineteen thousand. And I will pull it up on my computer and happily show it to any of you who are interested, but if you look at...if you look at Wisconsin Avenue and East West Highway... No, it's on another map. Anyway, if you look at Wisconsin Avenue and East West Highway, it's double that, it's forty thousand cars. So on one hand, you have nineteen thousand, on the other hand, you have forty thousand. Like I said, I don't know if that's coming and going, maybe it's actually only ten thousand and twenty thousand. Either way, there's twice as many trips from people going down Wisconsin Avenue by car. We're not even talking about the Metro yet. There's twice as many trips that go down Wisconsin Avenue in Bethesda than go along Falls Road past the Potomac Community Center. So then, the next thing I brought along was...I have a map that shows car ownership in Montgomery County. This is a map showing people who have...who do not have a car. And I need one of those back if you don't mind. Thank you, okay. So, and what that shows, and this is actually a more detailed view of the same thing, the area we're looking at. What that shows is that downtown Bethesda is one of the highest areas in the county in terms of people who own no cars. And the census tract that is on this map is roughly twenty-six percent of households in Bethesda that have no cars. The highest area, by the way, is in Long Branch in Silver Spring, which has roughly thirty-four percent with no cars. I don't know that Vivian Malloy remembered this, but the Central Committee, when we voted for the 2014 election, actually recommended using the Long Branch Center as an early voting site, and we did not do that. And I, of course, did not have this data at the time, but in any event, we, when we were...when we were in, you know, when the Democrats were in the majority on the Board elections, we voted for Damascus and did not vote for Long Branch. But Long Branch has the highest area in Montgomery County of people without cars. But downtown Bethesda is, you know, in the top ten, along with downtown Silver Spring, Old Town, Gatorsburg, Leisure World, and, you know, a number of other places. So it's not just a supposition on our part that there's lots of people in Bethesda who do not have cars and therefore would need to rely on public transportation. There's actually data to support that. Now, I have one more map to share with you, and this is the map of people in Montgomery County who have three cars. Yeah, I'll just pass it there. If you actually want to get to the southernmost part, you have to actually flip to the back side. But what you will see, the darker blue is a higher percentage, and what you will see is, is that roughly forty-seven percent in Potomac with three cars. And I have nothing against people having three cars. I have teenagers, so I have three cars. One of them is at school right now.
Would you be willing to give one of them up, Mr. Neiman?
I would be happy to discuss that with you offline, yes, that's fine. None of them are new, I should just add, but I have nothing against people who have three cars, but I think people with three cars are in a pretty good position to drive to an early voting site that is ten to fifteen minutes away. By contrast, if you live in downtown Bethesda and you want to go by public transportation to the Potomac Community Center, it'll take you almost an hour to go by bus. That doesn't count any waiting time, because the bus doesn't come all the time, although there is a bus that goes from, as the testimony indicated, there is a bus that goes from Bethesda, you have to go through Friendship Heights, and then it'll take you to Potomac. But all I can say is that when you get to the Potomac Community Center, I hope you're not hungry, because the closest place to eat to the Potomac Community Center...
Take your food with you.
Well, yeah, you would have to take your food with you, because the closest place to eat to the Potomac Community Center, I don't know if any of you are familiar with Normandy Farms, that is the closest place to eat to the Potomac Community Center. If you are familiar with it, I looked it up in TripAdvisor, it gets four dollar signs.
They employ a lot of people there.
Yes, I'm sure they do, I'm sure they do, but it's a mile away, and so you'll have to walk there, and you better be wearing nice clothes, because you're going to a nice restaurant. By contrast, if you live in Bethesda, and if you go vote in Bethesda, there are three hundred restaurants in Bethesda. So there's definitely a huge difference between what you would expect to find at the Potomac Community Center and what you would expect to find in Bethesda. There's also forty thousand people who work in Bethesda every day. There's also a huge number of people who ride on the Metro red line through to and through Bethesda. And I'm looking for my cheat sheet about Metro, but the gist of it is, is that there are twenty thousand people who get on the Metro at either Friendship Heights or Bethesda. There's another twenty thousand people who get on the Metro at one of the sites that are just to the north of Bethesda, which would basically be Medical Center, Grosvenor, White Flint, and Twinborough. So those twenty thousand people, not all of them will be commuting downtown, but a lot of them will be, some of them may be commuting to Bethesda, they may be among the forty thousand who work in Bethesda. But those people who commute on the Metro would have a relatively easy time getting off the Metro in Bethesda. It's a very long escalator, for those of you who are familiar with Bethesda Metro, but once you get to the top, it's about a half a mile to get to the Lawton Center. So you would add an additional...you know, by having the site in Bethesda, you're providing access to the people who ride the Metro, again, roughly twenty thousand get on at Friendship Heights in Bethesda, another twenty thousand get on at those four stops that are just to the north of Bethesda. You have twice as many cars that go by, you have many more people who work in downtown Bethesda. So I think that the math, regardless of people's intentions, makes very clear that if we were to move the early voting site from Bethesda to Potomac, we cannot expect that turnout will go up. The people who, you know, and I have to say, I personally do not believe that it makes sense for us to make it that much harder for people who don't have cars, many of them millennials and senior citizens, to go to vote, so that people with cars who don't want to pay for the fees in Rockville, which are...I mean, they're paying, I go to Rockville a lot, I don't like paying them, but, you know, if you go to a Rockville business, they will validate for you, and you get two hours of free parking, and if you go to the library, they'll validate for you, you get two hours of free parking. I personally don't think that there's a compelling reason, and certainly I don't think that the reason would be to increase turnout of all voters. If your goal is to increase turnout of all voters, I think the numbers here are very clear. There are also thirty thousand more voting-age adults who live in the Bethesda Chevy Chase area than who live in Potomac. Let me say that again. There are thirty thousand more people who live in the Bethesda Chevy Chase area than live in Potomac. So, yeah, there's fifty thousand more that live in Damascus. But at the moment, I'm just speaking to the amendment, which, you know, which is the Lawton Center versus Potomac. I personally would be happy to have an early voting site in Potomac. I just don't think that a case has been made that there's any reason not to have an early voting site in Bethesda. The number-one question that I received from people about early voting, when I sought this job, not from the activists, from the people who, just the average person, and the number-one question I heard prior to our going to nine sites from the five sites was, why is there no early voting site in Bethesda? And everyone assumed that the reason was, was because of political reasons on the part of the Democrats. And in fact, a Republican member of the Board suggested it at the very first meeting in 2011 when I was on the Board, suggested a site in Bethesda, and of course, we then put a site in Bethesda. So let me just add one more thing, and then I'll stop on this amendment. Early voting in Maryland lasts eight days. It's from April fourteenth to twenty-first in 2016 for the primary, and the polls are open from ten in the morning until eight in the evening. So three-quarters of those days are Monday through Friday, and the majority of those hours are during the workday. So if you're trying to increase overall turnout, and you want to be fiscally responsible in the use of county and state resources, do you choose a site near the city where forty thousand people work every day, or do you choose a site in a community center in a more, you know, remote residential neighborhood? I think, you know, people have different reasons for what they do, totally understand that. But if your goal, as Jim has suggested, is to increase turnout, I'd love to think that adding polling places in new places would increase turnout. I have no doubt that if we added a polling place in Long Branch, we would increase turnout in Long Branch. And I'm sure that if we add a site in Potomac, we'll increase voting in Potomac, et cetera, et cetera. But I think that before we take away a site from a place where people go to work, play, eat, go to the movies, go shopping, you know, et cetera, I think that you have to assume that if you're going to do that, you are going to lower turnout. So I hope that we won't do that. I hope that we won't just fix half the problem. I would urge all of you to consider the data that I just provided. I didn't invent this data. All of it is actually available online, and I'd be happy to give anyone who wants it, you know, the locations to find them, because, trust me, I do not know how to make charts like this, so it definitely was not me. But I would urge you to consider restoring both of the locations that were removed as early voting sites.
Mr. President, I would like to speak on the amendment. I oppose the amendment, and I support your very reasoned and reasonable compromise plan. You know, look, we've been through the debate before, we've looked at a lot of statistics. I don't think this is really about the numbers and the statistics, and I can come up with statistics that rebut almost everything that Mr. Neiman has said. But I think what we need to realize here, and I disagree with Mrs. Keefe on this, this has been partisan and political from day one. And the very evening that we took the vote on September twenty-first, a systematic campaign to demonize the Republican members of this Board was begun. The Democratic Central Committee was behind it, and I had never once heard my Democratic colleagues on this Board speak out against some of the vile and vicious things that have been said about us, that we were favoring discrimination, disenfranchisement of voters, that we were vote suppressors. It's as if there is no reasonable disagreement about where to put these sites, and there's only one right answer. Now, Mr. Shalick has put forward a compromise because we want to try to move forward in a spirit of unity, and to give a little and get a little. But the message from the Democratic Party has been, no compromise, it's our way, or you're all anti-American. That's what they said. And, you know, look, Mrs. Keefe and Mr. Neiman appeared at a rally at the courthouse yesterday. I mean, who said this was not political? I mean, it's all political. It was organized by the Democratic Central Committee. Can I correct him? No, no, I have the floor, Mr. Neiman. You haven't spoken for fifteen minutes. This, you know, look, when Mr. Shalick proposed the compromise to all of his Board members by email on Sunday night, Mr. Neiman's first phone call was to Mr. Turk at the Washington Post. Now, notice disrespect for Mr. Turk, he's doing his job, but, you know, this was all about generating publicity for this, rather than...he could have provided us these charts and maps, and we could have discussed it and talked about it, whether we thought it was good or not, or how we could get around it, reach compromise, but no, that's not how he chose to operate. This was all about trying to create maximum... This was all about trying to create maximum embarrassment for all of us. Now, I remember when we testified before the county council. I see Councilwoman Sidney Katz here. I appreciate him showing up. He urged us to find a way to compromise. And I think that's what we've done here. And so there is no one right answer to this question. There are very valid reasons to have an early voting site in Potomac. It's as if, from what we've heard here, that nobody lives there. There are no buses ever go through that area, and it's just tumbleweeds. I mean, this is unbelievable to me. I mean, even the statistics that the county council had before it two weeks ago shows that the Bethesda Census District was 60,000 people in 2010, and Potomac was 45,000. I mean, it's not the kind of disparity that Mr. Neiman was talking about. But we can debate the numbers and the statistics until the sun goes down and beyond. We're never going to reach agreement based on that because this is not about the numbers. It's not about the statistics. It's about whether the Democratic Party is going to force through and get what it wants. And if it doesn't get what it wants, everyone else is going to be bullied into submission. And I refuse to submit to that. So for these reasons, Mr. President, I urge that the amendment by Mrs. Keefe be rejected and that your motion be adopted.
Sure. First, let me say, there were a number of things, Alex, that you said that were not accurate. And I'm going to-- I jotted down some of them, but I will-- I'm sure I will miss some. First of all, I do not represent the Democratic Party. I did not-- I did have the opportunity, if you saw the News Channel 8 debate on Monday, to say that you guys were racially motivated. And I said that I didn't think that you were. And I don't know that it's my job to go seeking out every tweet and respond to it. I'm not on Twitter. I'm not on Facebook. So I don't know that that's my responsibility. But I'll say it right here. I am not questioning your motivations. I am questioning your judgment. I am not questioning your motivation. I am also questioning your goal. You just said that the numbers may not matter. But Jim said that he wants to increase turnout. I'm saying to Jim, if you want to increase turnout, what you're doing-- the numbers don't lie. What you're doing is making voting easier for a smaller number of people, making voting much harder for a larger number of people. Now, we can debate as to whether that amounts to voter suppression. Some people think that anytime you make it harder for-- you make the number of people voting-- you make it harder for people to vote, that it's voter suppression. Some people view that only as being voter suppression if it's based on recs. I personally believe that we should try to increase the number of people who vote by early voting, regardless of where they live, regardless of who they are, regardless of which party they support. But I've been searching really, really hard for a reason why, you know, the site in Bethesda has some flaw that causes you guys to do it, other than you're viewing it like it's a partisan battle. And I also would say that-- I make no apologies for discussing this issue with the Washington Post. And I think that this issue is of great public importance. Jim Shalit called me on Saturday to discuss this with me. He called Mary Ann on Saturday to discuss this with her. What we said to him is exactly what we're saying now. There is no surprise here. There is no secret here. We said, you know, it is a misnomer to call this a compromise. This is not a compromise. This is your effort to change the debate before we go to the State Board tomorrow.
That's an opinion, Mr. Neiman.
Yes, that is an opinion. It's my opinion.
Yes.
Okay?
It's no more valid than anyone else?
Well, yes. Feel free to disagree with it. But I think, in most cases, a compromise is something that two people reach together where both sides' needs are taken into consideration. We explained to Jim what we thought about the situation. The next thing I heard was a notice for a meeting. Okay? Once there's a notice for a meeting, that's public information. I have no apologies to make for telling the Washington Post about a notice for a meeting that's public information.
Evidently not.
So, no. And there's no way I will. The Washington Post should be here. Every other media outlet should be here. This is very important to the members of the public. But the last thing I want to say is that-- first of all, the rally you're referring to was at the county council. It was not at the courthouse. And it was not a partisan rally. In fact, it was--
Were there any Republicans there?
I'm not-- I don't know if there were any Republicans there. I don't-- for example, the gentleman from the NAACP was here. The NAACP is a bipartisan organization, or nonpartisan organization. And I have no idea what his party affiliation is. There were a lot of people there who I have no idea what their party affiliation is. There were a bunch of ministers there. I have no idea what their party affiliation is. And there was Representative Common Cause there. Common Cause is a nonpartisan organization. I don't know the whole list of people that were there. But I personally have not appeared at any partisan rally. I'm very aware that there have been partisan rallies. There were partisan rallies over the weekend. I know that they were there. I intentionally did not go. Okay? So I take very seriously my responsibility to judge things on the merits. And to judge things on the merits-- you know-- the activists in Democratic Party can tell you that there's plenty of times when we agree, and plenty of times when we disagree. And if you have any friends who are active in the Democratic Party, ask them about the three of us, and you will hear that we are not controlled. In fact, you'll hear complaints that we are not controlled.
Would Mr. Anderson agree with that?
Yes, I would.
And the proof of that is that we added an early voting site in Damascus. And you can be sure that that was-- and were questioned about it when we saw a reappointment. You can be sure that that was not partisanship. But now, let's look at the other side of this. The other side of this is that, until today, we had not heard from a single Potomac resident asking for an early voting site in Potomac.
Excuse me. I live in Potomac, and I came here two years ago and testified for that site.
Okay. I'm referring to-- we had-- we heard from the public on August 31st at our meeting. We heard from the public on September 12th at our public hearing. We heard from the public September 21 at our meeting. And we heard from the public today. Until today, for this cycle, we did not hear from a single Potomac resident asking for an early voting site in Potomac. We did hear from one Potomac resident who did not want an early voting site in Potomac. We heard from no Potomac residents asking for an early voting site in Potomac. We didn't get an email-- to my recollection, we didn't get any emails about it. We didn't get anything.
How is that public?
Excuse me.
Yeah, I didn't even know it was possible. I figured they were set. We did not know it was about it. I just know we had a poll.
Our hearings were publicized.
How?
Our website shows-- I would suggest you take that up with the members of the media. Our website shows all of our meetings. Our public hearing was noticed. Our meetings were noticed. There actually was no notice that we were taking comments today. We took them anyway. I don't think anyone can say that we haven't been listening to the public. But not a single person from Potomac-- until today-- we had 30 people email us just yesterday-- just from the beginning of yesterday to the end of yesterday-- about restoring the two sites.
Mr. Neiman, what about this email?
Not a single one. But what we do know is that you guys had a private meeting with your party, and then you proposed to put an early voting center in Potomac. So I would suggest that before you start complaining about how we're partisan, you explain exactly why it is that-- you know, that-- we're partisan because we're trying to keep the same sites near the people so that more people can vote. But you're having your own input from your party. Your party didn't even come and testify at any of these occasions.
Yes, they did.
No, they didn't. No. The gentlemen from the Young Republicans came to testify. But your party organization did not testify on August 31st, September 12th, September 21st, or today. They didn't have to. They had a conversation with you offline. So as a result, you knew what they wanted, and we didn't. Okay? We didn't have the benefit of their input. We didn't hear from a single Potomac resident asking for that. I'm sure there are Potomac residents who want that site. But, you know, when Jim has said Potomac wanted a site, no one from Potomac came here and said that they wanted a site.
At the September meeting, practically nobody showed up and testified in favor of the Bethesda site or the site in Burtonsville either. It was all about Wheaton and Silver Spring, which this board retained all of those locations.
But I think in Potomac--
You weren't at the meeting.
Let's-- please, there was time of public comment. That is, time is coming, gone. Please have the board members--
Then why do we hear comments from people here?
No comments from the audience, thanks.
Okay.
Chairs should have cut it off sooner.
Okay. can't win no matter what. So I would just say that-- Alex, you very eloquently suggested at one of our previous meetings-- you also suggested that we weren't doing it, but you suggested that we shouldn't do it, that we shouldn't attempt to try and read other people's motives, I believe was the phrase you used. I'd have to go back to the tape to know it exactly. And I took that seriously. It's also something that Vice President Biden has talked about quite a bit. He tells a story about how Mike Mansfield lectured him about the same thing when he complained about one of his colleagues from the other party and learned a lot more about that person to suggest that-- you don't always have the whole story. All I would say is that if you want that benefit of the doubt, you have to give that benefit of the doubt. And I can tell you-- and I will-- whatever oaths need to be taken, whatever-- I can tell you, I make up my own mind. I believe that we should have-- we should put our polling places as close to as many voters as we can. I have no problem with supporting adding more polling places in the places that you want them. I just don't think that there's been a reason given to take away the ones that we have. I'm interested in hearing-- if you all have a reason for why it is that you think that Bethesda no longer needs a site, but Damascus does. You know, I'd like to hear it. But, you know-- at this point, I think it's very hard to say that on our side that we have acted in a partisan fashion. Certainly, the record does not show that.
Mr. President, I just have a couple of final points, and I'm going to move the previous question. Look, the emails that were flooded into the Board of Elections Monday occurred within 12 hours of Mr. Shalit announcing his compromise. This was not a spontaneous outbreak of popular reaction. This was an organized political operation. These emails were two-- they all said the same thing. They all came in at roughly the same time-- the first 12 to 18-hour period. This had all the hallmarks of spontaneity as a demonstration in Iran and North Korea. Let's not pretend that this was spontaneous. It just wasn't. And as far as Vice President Biden goes, he also suggested during the 2012 election cycle that to elect Republicans would be to put African-Americans back in chains. And I think that was one of the most outrageous things I've ever heard in politics. But, look, Mr. Neiman, I'm glad that you have confirmed that you're not questioning my motives, and it's good to hear. But I think that, you know, the time has come to make a decision on this. But I will just conclude by saying that-- to say that Mr. Shalit's motion is not a compromise is just illusion. It is a compromise. It was intended as such. And I would hope that the other party and our colleagues would view it as such. So with that, I would move the previous question.
No. I'm going to speak to this, Alex, and since you wanted to speak quite a bit about me. Your time on the board has been four and a half months. So I don't think you have a long history in working with me, in seeing what my work has been in the past. However, you do have the original nine voting sites that came into being two years ago. And I think that demonstrates very clearly what I'm all about. It demonstrates the nonpartisan, bipartisan nature of what my work has been. And so I really take exception to what you have said. I have not been in collusion or communication with party leaders on this issue at all. I've been straightforward from the beginning with what I supported and what I spoke to earlier with my motion about wanting to retain the nine sites that we have. But there's one issue that David brought up, and I wonder if I could just ask the Republican majority members, what is wrong with the Bethesda site? Why do you want to give it up after such a short period of time with one election cycle when it was something that your party originally asked us to do?
Well, as I've said many times, we wanted to bring a site-- we're limited to nine sites. We wanted to bring a site to an area-- an old, established area that's made a lot of contributions to our county. We wanted to bring a site to a new area that covers a vast geographic area and gives people that never had the opportunity to vote early that opportunity. I wish we had 11 sites.
Bethesda only had that opportunity in 2014. And now you want to rip it away from them. You know what we go through, Jim? We've just been starting the process of looking at some of these precinct polling places where there might have to be some changes made. Oh, that is something that is a very serious issue that we look upon seriously because we recognize you can't keep moving voting sites every election cycle. I mean, that's one of the oldest tricks in the book in terms of voter suppression. You know, people think it's election day, and they're going to go where they voted last time. And they get there, oh, guess what? Now, I recognize early voting is over a period of days. You know, the information would go on. But the fact of the matter is, it's just not a good thing to do without a good reason. And I'll be darned if I can find what reason there is to just get rid of the Bethesda site.
I wish we could keep it.
Well, keep it. Keep it.
No, we wanted to bring it to an-- as I've said, I don't want to repeat. It's a new area that will, in my view, encourage people in Potomac to vote. Our voting last time was dismal.
How was voting in Potomac last time?
I'm talking about there was no early voting.
No. How was voting in Potomac overall last time? Is there an issue with voting turnout in Potomac?
We're talking about early voting. And there was no early voting. So let's give Potomac an opportunity. They deserve it.
But we've been hearing from people today that went to other places from Potomac to vote early.
Hold on a second. Jim, you just said something that-- I know you don't mean it to be disturbing, but it is. And that is that you said they deserve it.
It's a new area. They never had it.
Okay. But Long Branch has never had it either. And you talk about how Potomac is an established community. I'm pretty sure Long Branch is an established community. You talk about how Potomac-- on Monday, you said they make a lot of contributions. I assume you meant contributions to the community, that you didn't mean those other kinds of contributions.
Property.
But-- I mean, you're using a bunch of criteria here that I think-- we're trying to get our head around what it is you're trying to say. Because there's lots of communities that would have higher voter turnout if they were to have early voting sites. And there's lots of communities that quote-unquote "deserve it." But when you say that, though-- as any of us know who have more than one child, if you tell one child that they deserve something, the other child says, "What did I do?" And what you're essentially saying is you're saying Potomac deserves it, and Bethesda Chevy Chase doesn't. it and Bethesda Chevy Chase doesn't.
That's not what he said.
No, well, but I'm telling you, that is how it's going to be interpreted, because the people, because the people from Potomac, if you say to one child, you know, it, it is a parenting technique, I'm sure there's plenty of parents here who, who, who know this, that you can say to one child, you know, "You're doing a really good job", and the other child, you know, the other child hears that. What you're, what you're saying, what you're saying right now is, you're saying Potomac deserves this, and I, you know, and apparently, you know, other communities deserve this and some, and, and, and I want to understand, you know, what we're trying to find out is, why does Bethesda not deserve this?
Mr. Neiman, are you running for public office?
I am not running for public office, I'm, I'm prohibited by law from running for public offices.
We're clear on what everybody's position is. My, my motion is made as a compromise, if the board approves my motion, we will have approved eight of the nine sites that were selected by the board when it had a Democratic majority. If that's not a compromise, we're giving, if we, if you vote for my proposal, we have approved eight of your nine sites.
Excuse me, but why do those sites belong to us? Why does, why, why do you say, why do you say that those nine sites belong to us?
Because you voted during, when you were in majority, I voted no, because I wasn't-
You, you actually did not vote no, you voted yes, the final vote was three to two, and you and Nancy and Mary Ann were in the three, Dominique and Gracie were in minority. So, so why are they, so, so, so Jim, these are not our sites, okay? These are the county sites.
Right.
And we're, these are, these are the board's sites.
Right.
Okay, so, so, when you say that you, that you've kept eight of them, that's great, okay? And, and, and I would argue that you should keep nine, or that if you were going to change one, you should change the one that had the lowest turnout, okay? But, but be that as it may, you're not compromising with us when you decide that Silver Spring has to have a voting site, Silver Spring had more voters maybe than any site in the state.
And we never, we never said that we would keep-
I understand, you never said that, but then you want to get credit for having said that you kept eight sites. I mean, keeping sites where the voters are is our job.
Mr. President, I move the previous question.
We're going to now vote on Mary Ann's amendment, oh, I'm sorry, Gracie, yeah?
I'm just going to be very brief.
That's okay.
I have yet to hear a compelling reason why you don't want to keep Bethesda, and I would just urge you to consider another population that's usually overlooked, which is the senior population in that area. So, I, um, as someone who advocated in the past for the Damascus site, it's very disturbing to me as someone who, who thinks that the voting right is one of the most precious things that we have as Americans. And when I look at our Constitution, it says "we the people", it doesn't say "we the Democrats versus the Republicans", it says "we the people". And it's very disturbing to me, the tone that this has been going on. We were, when we served at the last, at the last time we, we chose the last sites, we did it in the best interest of the voters on accessibility, where they were, where they, was their public transportation, um, do handicapped individuals can have access to these voting sites. It wasn't just, you know, "we the Democrats want this". So, I would urge you to take into consideration the senior population in Bethesda, and it will, I think we're all, we all have a lot of common sense, and I think, um, in the best interest of the people of Montgomery County, I think you would do the right thing.
Okay, we're going to vote on Mary Ann's amendment, to my amendment, and Mary Ann's amendment was that the board restore both Burtonsville and Bethesda Chevy Chase, is that correct?
Her amendment was to amend your motion to restore both.
To restore both.
It would still need to be voted on after that.
My, my motion.
Yes.
But your motion is to amend my-
My, you spoke directly to Bethesda, and to add, add the Lawton Community Center and delete Potomac Communities.
Okay, let's, all those in favor of Mary Ann's amended motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No? Okay, that, that is defeated.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Um, I'd like to move to amend your motion to add the Lawton Community Center and delete the Damascus Community Center.
So, you want to amend my motion to restore Burtonsville and-
Your motion, we're, we're, I'm leaving the part of your motion that restores Burtonsville.
Okay.
I'm adding to it that we would also restore Lawton and we would, um, delete the Damascus Community Center.
Okay, any comment?
I second your motion.
Okay.
I, I would just say that I have many friends in Damascus, I'd love for Damascus to have a site, Damascus does not have the numbers to support a site. There are more people in Bethesda without cars than there are people in Damascus. And, um, and I think that, um, I, I think that when you look at a site that had barely 500 people vote there in, in the, um, 2014 primary, and I believe less than 1,500 people who voted there in the 2014 general election, um, we only have nine sites, there's obviously demand to have them, I think we need to have those sites where we can get the most bang for our buck and get the most number of people to, um, to, to use them. It does require the people of Damascus to drive to get to Germantown or Gatorsburg. According to Google Maps, if you live in Clarksville, you can in almost the same amount of time get to Germantown or Gatorsburg as you can to Damascus, but even so, um, the number of people that are involved is just a far, um, lower number of people than, than in any of the other sites that, that we have been considering. So, so, so if we were, um, if, if we are to do away with a site that was an existing site, um, I would argue that we should do it based on data and on performance, um, and not just, uh, because we still don't know, like I said, we're still waiting for an answer as to why Bethesda. If someone asks me why Damascus, the answer is the numbers, that is the, that, that is, that is the reason why I'm making, I'm making this proposal.
Mr. Chairman, I move the question.
Yes.
I move the question, vote on the question.
I'd like to speak to it as well. Uh, I, I, I support the motion because it goes back to what I have been talking about in terms of what's wrong with Bethesda. I understand you, you know, your reply is, nothing's wrong with Bethesda, but you wanted to recognize a new area that hasn't had anything. But, in recognizing a new area that hasn't had a site before, then I think you have to look at the whole of what exists out there, and the one that really jumps out is not Bethesda, which we have given all the data in the world on as to why it should remain, but it is Damascus because the numbers just aren't there. And although I supported Damascus, as I've been saying, as one of the, the nine sites, which was highly supported by the Republican majority at the time, uh, but because you're not adding sites, you're just wanting to change sites to give a site to Potomac, and so the only one that really is credible to say we would move it is Damascus because it, it just, it, it isn't going to have any kind of population numbers to come close to, to any of the others for, for some time. So for that reason, I would support the motion.
Mrs. Keith, I'd like to say, I mean, I think the numbers wouldn't have supported Damascus even when you supported it two years ago, right? I mean, that was true then as it is now. We, we, I'm talking with her, Dave.
Hi, I, I was going to answer your question, but it's-
Does she want you to answer her questions? I mean, isn't it enough that you answer your own? All, all I'm saying, Mr. Keith, is that I, I think that probably the numbers for Damascus weren't there two years ago, and you're saying they're not there now, but there were reasons that you supported it other than the numbers, I think, last time, wouldn't that be fair to say?
Yes, there were, uh, one of the principal reasons was that I was working with my colleagues who were sitting where you're sitting, and it was a site that they felt very strongly in, in support of, and, um, because we were adding four new sites, it was a reasonable thing to do. It was a location that, uh, I, I thought, you know, we should look to putting a site, and we looked to growth opportunities there. However, you're talking about removing a site now, it's a totally different, uh, conversation, and, uh, if you're going to remove a site to put in something new, then you have to look at the overall picture of the existing sites, and the one that makes the most sense to remove is the one that simply doesn't have voters, people. It gets back to the, what we heard in, in the beginning here from people in the audience, this is about the voters, it's not about geography, it's not about geographic distribution, whatever that means, uh, it's about where are the voters and how can we accommodate their needs in voting? And, um, and certainly Potomac is an area that, uh, you know, demonstrates extremely well that it has a lot of people, it has people that live there, it has people coming through there constantly, it's an ideal site, site for, uh, early voting. And, um, if you want Potomac, then I think you have to look at the site that simply doesn't measure up to the others in terms of turnout, and that's Damascus.
I call the question.
Okay, so we're going to vote on David's amendment to my amendment to restore Burtonsville and, uh, no.
My amendment, your, your proposal is to restore Burtonsville instead of Brookville, my amendment is to add to that list that we restore Lawton and delete Damascus.
All those in favor of David's amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, so that, that's defeated through you two. We'll go back to my motion.
I call the question on the main motion before the body, Mr. President.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have another motion, but I did want to make a point about procedure here. Under Robert's rules, um, in order to call the question, so to speak, it requires a two-thirds vote of the body to end debate, I don't have more debate, but, but I will say that calling the question is, um, does not accomplish its goal unless you get a two-thirds vote, and as long as one of my colleagues wants to speak, I'm not voting to end debate.
If you want, yeah.
You know, and that, and, you know, for, so, um, I, I would just appreciate that, that, you know, this is a very serious matter, um, and, and I, I would hope that we would let people, you know, have their say, if they want to have their say.
I agree, I agree. Does anybody want to say anything?
I guess I would have a final comment that, um, I think some of the debate here this evening took on a, a personal nature that I really haven't seen before at our board meetings, and, uh, I, I really regret that. I, I know, I am social friends with a, a number of my colleagues who I enjoy very much, and, uh, we have worked extremely well together over the years, it's been a very collegial board, and, uh, I just hope that, uh, that we can, can put these kind of comments behind us moving forward.
I would like to say that I agree with Mary Ann, thank you for saying that. Also, everybody does get to vote, Election Day, everybody can, almost everybody can walk to their precincts, there, this is not, you don't get to vote if you're not done living near a voting place, you, everybody can vote on Election Day, everybody can vote by computer, everybody can vote by mail, so it's not, this is not the only way people are going to get to vote, thank you.
First, I want to agree with what Jackie just said, and thank you very much for saying it, um, when we meet on Monday, when we talk about everybody being able to vote, to walk to their precincts, I'm going to repeat that because in some instances, I want to make sure that people can continue to walk to their precincts. As far as, as this discussion today, um, the only thing I'm going to, I'm going to add to all of this is that I'm still, I'm trying very hard to understand the motivation, I understand the motivation to allow new communities, apparently it's some new communities, and some established communities, um, but, um, we haven't heard a compelling reason to do away with the early voting center in, in Bethesda. Usually, um, the definition of arbitrary and capricious is when you, when you can't find the rationale behind it. I, I, I really would, would rather have the rationale, um, I, I would rather understand it because, um, it is, it is very, very troubling to me. I like and respect all of my colleagues, um, I think I've, um, had lunch or dinner with just about everybody here, um, and, um, and I know that we have a very serious disagreement on this issue, um, we may have disagreements on future issues, we may have, we have agreements on many more issues than we have disagreements, and that was always, um, my experience over, 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 over the last, the last four years. All of us want people to vote, um, and, um, and I certainly plan to do whatever I can to make it, to help as many people, um, vote as, as we can. I, I think that this motion is, um, solves half the problem, I'm going to oppose it, um, I, I, I don't have a rationale that I can give to anybody for why I would support the motion as it exists without either of the amendments that, that we proposed.
Okay, so my motion is to restore the Burtonsville Marilyn Praesner Early Voting Site, and we're going to take off our recommendations to the State Board, the Law Center.
No.
I mean, uh-
Longwood.
Law Center.
You already took off.
Sorry. Let me repeat that, my, my motion, my amended motion is to restore Burtonsville and, uh, take off the Longwood Site, which was in the Brookville only area. Is it very clear what the motion is? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, so that passes through you two. So now our, uh, early voting sites are Damascus, Germantown, Gatorsburg, Rockville, Potomac, Aspen Hill, Wheaton, Silver Spring, and Praesner, the Marilyn Praesner Center in Burtonsville.
Actually, our proposed early voting centers are those, and the State Board still acts tomorrow afternoon.
Correct, correct. With that, we're going to adjourn the meeting and thank you all for coming.
You move.
All right, motion to adjourn.
I move.